Good evening, or good afternoon. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Mr. Corn, please rise for prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Let us pray. God our Father, we thank you for having called us together that we may humbly serve you at this meeting. Send your Holy Spirit upon us and remain present among us to lead us in conversations and discussions we will have. Bless our words, thoughts with holiness, that we may be fitting instruments of your grace. We ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a certification of public notice?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That's to notify the public as Texas Open Meetings Act on Friday the twenty fifth.
Okay. Any disclosure of conflict of interest to anyone here? Public comments, the board members will allow a specific portion of the work session meeting to be dedicated to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Please note that this is public comment period, is not interactive. The board members may not respond to public comments.
Good morning, good afternoon, board members, staff. Just a little bit of house rules. We do have some mics that are located in front of you. We have been advised by our communications department that if you choose to go ahead and utilize the mic, if you could go ahead and just make sure that the mic is on green by pressing the button that is located right in front, and please bring it towards you so that way it is covered and recorded clearly within the video and audio. We do have board members from our zoning board of adjustments, as well as our planning and zoning commission management, and some other departments that have been assisting us with regards to building permits for carports.
I guess before we get started, if we can go around the room just introducing ourselves, because I know it's not common for us to have a joint meeting. We do have some new zoning board of adjustment members, so if we can start with our PNC chair.
Okay, Jorge Sotelo, and I'm on the planning zoning board.
Elias Lgory, I'm planning zoning.
Jorge Gonzalez, planning zoning.
Good afternoon, Rudy Camitas, planning and zoning.
Andrew Almaguer, zoning board of adjustments.
Michael Contra, zoning board of adjustments.
Eliseo Garza, Jr., zoning board of adjustments.
Mark A. Gonzalez, board of adjustments.
Ruben Ruiz, board of adjustments.
Omar Govea, zoning board of adjustments.
Matthew Cruz, board of adjustments.
Mardo Kevin Josas, city engineer.
Gabriel Espinoza, Edinburgh Fire Department.
Isaios Pousadas, engineering.
Edgar Casares, building safety.
Homer Garza, Edinburgh Fire Department.
Tom Reyna, assistant city manager.
Jay Sines, one of the assistant city managers.
I'm the planning and zoning director.
The one that doesn't listen to own rules. I'm just kidding. I'm ready to get out on the assistant director of planning and zoning.
Jerry Lozano, city council place four.
Can we get started with the first item on the agenda, which is the presentation?
We're gonna have a presentation by Jaime Acevila, Director of Planning and Zoning, on carports.
Good morning, everybody. Well, it's been a long time coming, but I think this meeting was well overdue. Just driving around Edinburgh, you'll see carports pretty much everywhere. Some are legal, some are illegal, and it's kinda hard for us as staff members to turn away somebody when their neighbor has a carport, but that neighbor might have not gotten a permit. So, prepared a little short presentation to kinda go over the problem, some, what the rules are, some possible solutions that we may have. But it's all gonna come down, this is just a, like a informal meeting where we can discuss the problem. Later on this year, we will be making changes to unified development code, and that's when we'll formally adopt something a little bit more concrete that we can follow. If we decide to actually go that route. We may decide to keep things the way that they are, but that's what this meeting is for, to kinda get your input from both boards and some council members, and to see what changes, if any, can can come about from these meetings. The problem is, as outlined there in the handout, is that residents are converting their garages into living areas or storage units. It's not uncommon for people to come in and get a building permit to convert their garage into a living structure, an additional bedroom. I mean, the family has grown, now they need more space, and they'll convert it into a living area. And now they got their car outside, and they want protection for their for their vehicles. I mean, vehicles are expensive nowadays. It's not what they used to be. They're super expensive, and people wanna protect their investments, so they'll come to the city and they'll ask for a permit for a carport. And based on the setbacks, the setbacks where carports are currently a little bit more relaxed, when the unified development code came into place, we allowed them for ten additional feet from the front setback. But that only covers half the car, so people are saying, well, that really doesn't really help us. Those additional ten feet ain't gonna cover my twenty-two-foot-long four-door F-150. What can we do? So, we can't really do anything without them going through the zoning board of adjustments and apply for variance. Over the past three years, we've we've seen twenty-six carport variances in the zoning board of adjustments. And that's not counting the ones that just come in and tell us, you know what, I'm not even gonna go through the process, I'm just not gonna build it, because we do get those also. Another part of the problem is that contractors are telling the people, you don't need a permit. And these people will believe they're contractors, and they'll erect the carport. And then code enforcement passes by, because they're doing an inspection in a nearby house, and they'll see that the carport's there. They'll ask the owner if you got a permit. The owner will say, well, no, the contractor told me I didn't I didn't need a permit. So we start trying to call the contractor, he doesn't pick up the phone anymore, he's nowhere to be found. But the problem is still there. I mean, now the property owner has inherited a problem where they have a non-conforming structure in front of their house. Should they decide to sell it, the bank's gonna require a survey, it's not gonna get done. So that's where ZBA comes in, as their only option, as their savior, and we have to issue out a variance if the zoning board of adjustment approves it. And it kinda, it's kinda like puts you guys in a tough spot, because you're kind of almost forced to give it to them, because they got, they were misled, they're about to sell their house, and now they need a variance. If not, they can't sell their home. So, it's not a good situation for any of us, and that's why we're here to kind of see what can get done. Rudy, do you wanna show some of the, we now took some pictures of some of the carports in the area, and this one shows an RV that's kinda like encroaching onto the sidewalk, which is on city right-of-way. The the one in the middle is a stretched fabric carport, which, they look nice, but I don't know how long it's gonna last. Then the next one is a, it's got nice supporting columns, it's got brick columns, and it's got a metal structure above it. Then the next one shows a couple of more I-beam supporting columns and metal roofs. And then the one in the middle's kinda like the ones you see on the side of the road, usually at McCoy's or other places that sell these metallic ones. And then another stretched fabric one over there. None of these that you saw here are meeting code. They're all in violation of either the front setback, the side setback, or both setbacks. The unified development code does allow for the carports to be built if they meet code, and we did give them an additional ten feet of clearance that they can work with, but they need to they need to to meet the fire and building codes, and if in an HOA, they also need to comply with the HOA regs. But, other than that, the carports need to need need to meet code, should we want to continue to to give them permits, and can you go to the next slide, Rudy? This is a, this is a picture of one that does meet code. As you can see, it's 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 about twenty feet back, and it's meeting the side setback as well. But, most of them don't look like this. Most of them are are done illegally, and and we have a problem. I mean, they're 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 everywhere. They're everywhere in town. We see them a lot more in the old townside area. But we're we're now starting to see them in newer subdivisions. We have one in Los Lagos that we recently got wind of, so. I don't know. It's a big problem. What are you guys' thoughts?
Do you see them, do you see them off the driveway? Have you seen them like on a larger piece of property where they just put something up as an additional driveway? They may be inside the setbacks, but I don't know if that's legal or not.
If they're within the setbacks, it would be legal, and on a large lot, I mean, they're gonna have the room to do it. Because those houses are usually setback a little bit further, deeper into the lot. It's it's on the smaller fifty-by-one-hundred lots that we're having a lot of problems.
So is that, that's the main problem that we've got, is that that they're in over setbacks?
Right, and
The right-of-way.
And one of the trends that we've been starting to see, as the land gets more expensive, the lots get smaller. So, that's just, that's just the facts. I mean, I mean, land is more expensive, and the lots, developers are trying to make smaller and smaller lots. So, I mean, the problem ain't gonna go away.
Hey, Jaime, and on the twenty-six that you have, and I'm assuming it's the pictures? No, I can't, is this a good statement as far as they're putting the carports in, like the Edinburgh original townsite subdivisions, or are these newer subdivisions?
It's a combination. We're starting to see them everywhere.
So, so, and Mr. Lozano's a developer, so typically, as as we develop subdivisions, we we have deed restrictions. So, so once he sells out his subdivision, who's in charge of policing the restrictions, right?
It would be an HOA if there's one in place, but if there's no HOA, we're not gonna enforce deed restrictions when they come get a building permit here at the city, because there's so many subdivisions, they all have different deed restrictions. We don't get involved in deed restrictions.
That's what I was gonna ask, 'cause you said you had one in Los Lagos, and obviously, there's gonna be restrictions in that development. And for them to put it up, I guess nobody, or the developer's not gonna keep an eye on that either. Because an HOA is different. An HOA, you actually have to call our HOA board and get an approval for anything you do in a development, in an HOA.
And I guess moving forward is that you're educating the public that that we don't allow carports, or if we do have, if if they're gonna go before us or the board of adjustments, there's that protocol as far as do we allow it, or do we not allow it? And then if we don't, we have to accept it, and it's at the end, when when they're violating violating certain things, you can't close on the house, because there's a violation.
Right.
Right?
That's correct.
So this is a tough one. And then what what does the new code have? And what are other cities doing?
If I may address on the HOA thing, HOAs really have more of regulations on a private subdivision. On a private subdivision, since there is no city right-of-way, all they have to do is really respect our easements in a in a private subdivision. But in a public subdivision, even though there's an HOA, it's hard for them to enforce those regulations, because you're basically trying to enforce into city right-of-way, which they have no enforcement over. So that's where it gets kinda difficult. Trust me, I live in a private subdivision, and I fight with my HOA all the time. But, that's where it gets kinda tricky for us, is at that point.
So, if I can just kind of add to that a little, give a little aside to that. So, 'cause I've 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 talked to our legal counsel about this a little bit. You know, the zoning board of adjustments in the city does not have to respect deed restrictions, right? As a matter of fact, even in private subdivisions, you would need to get construction permits for for what you're doing, right? And we have made it a common practice to ask the individual coming for an exception or for a permit, especially if we know that they're coming from a private subdivision, if they have gotten permission from their architectural review committee. Some sort of a letter from that particular community saying, we've looked at it, we're good with it. Some some HOAs honestly wanna do it the opposite. They wanna know that the city has issued a permit before they will even review it, right? I've seen that. So some HOAs will say, no, we don't wanna give a letter, because I wanna know that everything's kosher with the city before you even ask for our permission. So they won't give that letter. It is not required that we receive that letter, because the zoning board of adjustment can make a decision to grant an exception to our requirements that we have regarding building setbacks. So basically, ZBA would say, and you've done it before, this carport is good. City, issue a permit as long as they meet all other building code requirements, right? And then we record that at the court, so in case it ever comes up in the title search for that property, it will show a variance or exceptions being granted for that property to allow for this, so that way hopefully it wouldn't help hold up the sale of the property. Because when the bank does the improvement survey, they're gonna show that encroachment, they're gonna wait, stop, right? We're not gonna move forward alone, right? Hopefully, they'll be able to dig it up with an instrument number, it's being recorded for that particular piece of property, it'll show the exception, right? So, even in private subdivisions, technically, the zoning board of adjustment can grant an exception, even if it's against the deed restriction, even if against, it's against their own HOA guidelines. The thing is, you may put yourself, or they may put themselves, in a legal position with their HOA, right? And as a property owner, even if there's not an established HOA, but your neighbor feels that you're violating the deed restriction, they can also take you to court, right, on that, and they could argue that, and that's more of a legal issue, right, on their end. But as far as the ZBA, y'all are also immune from your decisions, right? You make a decision, they can't come back to you, attorney can probably explain this better than I can, but say, hey, look, I'm gonna sue you for this, right? They can challenge it in court, but they only have a few days to do that. So, in talking to Jaime and reviewing some of the history on this, we once had proposed, many years ago, I think I was here like a year in, proposed some sort of a carport ordinance. But at that time, the planning and zoning commission, those sitting members said, hey, look, if you're gonna do this, then why have a front setback at all, right? Because you're just gonna kinda change the nature of the way the subdivisions look, right? And you can see it, like, original townsite, you can, we can go walk right now, and we'll see carports all over the place, right? Some, non-conforming, because they did them a long time ago, some they did actually get permits, and some they actually got variances for. But in your newer subdivisions that are coming up, that's not really typical, right? You'll get somebody to come in and ask for one, maybe, hopefully they didn't do it after the fact. I always feel bad for the zoning board of adjustment members, because that's a tough call, right? Because they've they spent fifteen, twenty, thirty thousand on a carport, the nicer ones, and yet you have to tell them you didn't meet the requirements, you're gonna have to tear it down. Or, you're gonna have to face all these residents to say, hey, you're starting a trend here, if you approve this. And you approve it, and now, sure enough, they're gonna start popping up all over the subdivision. So I guess what, without, you know, turning it over to Jaime too, is we're just kinda looking, as members of the community, guidance, right? Because we have some provisions that we'd like to propose also as far as solutions. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
I'm wondering if maybe with some of these newer subdivisions, that are obviously having to get approved here, that are public and have minimal restrictions, if there's a way to maybe possibly have some form of letter that these developers maybe have to put in their closing packet for title, and have the new buyer that's buying that lot sign that letter acknowledging that these are the rules for that property, right? If they ever do decide to build a carport, you know, I think that would be an easier thing, right? That these developers are educating the buyer and letting them know, hey, yes, it's minimal restrictions, but I do wanna make you aware that if you ever do decide to build a carport, because yes, there is no garage, or it's a one-car garage, whatever, but you still have to follow the code. I mean, that's
And that would work for like new developments, where we can talk to the developer and kind of have him implement that on his own?
Correct. That's what I'm saying, moving forward. I mean, how many new developments are popping up right now? I mean, I know there's dozens that are coming up, so that's dozens of lots that are gonna be happening here in the next year or two. So, it's a lot of carports if we don't let them know that they have to follow city rules, right, city ordinance.
And I know it usually does work out for a new home buyer. You're gonna sign up, they're gonna let you know, here's your, you have an HOA, you have to follow by all these rules you have. But once that house changes hands three to four times, now the house has been there for fifteen, twenty years, a new person comes in and says, hey, I want a carport, and, you know, that document's gonna stick to the original owner. Because now we're signing up for the HOAs, not actually to the lot itself. It'll be part of that original owner, so that's where we're getting the conflict. Especially like, for my purpose, if I'm buying a, for example, we have a piece of property that the city has, I'm looking to develop that property, but upon inspecting, I found fifteen different easements on that property. So I'm doing my investigation to go back to see what are those easements for? Are those easements still being used before I even get to that point? So this is what happens once it switches hands after that official.
I think that when you're going through the sale of a home, the deed has to get recorded, right? So I mean, maybe it's something that needs to be implemented in our city that this goes along with that deed, that goes along for the next owner, right? Hey, this this is part of the packet. If you ever do decide, this is a public neighborhood, it's not a a private HOA, so it only has minimal restrictions, but this is this is part of that.
Would something like that stick, Rudy?
Well, typically, as 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 properties change from hand to hand, and and not everybody uses a title company, right? So Edwards, Sierra, there's like, I think, eighteen now, right? So so you get a title commitment as you close these deals, and as you reflect on the different schedules, it has the recording deed restrictions. And I can name a bunch of subdivisions here. There's Ivy, there's Wendy, those have restrictions, but Cruz through there. Every other house has a carport. And again, who polices that? I, as a developer, I'm out, I cashed out. So now it's the people that live there monitor that, with or without an HOA. It's restrictions that that they advertise, and then as developers or or realtors that are hustling these properties, the more restrictions that you impose on me, the harder it is for me to move the dirt, right? So so you have these half-acre lots outside of the city that you can live in a carport box. And that's changing, right? Those Colonia rules are changing. So this is a tough one, guys. I don't know if there's a solution that's on an ask-per-case basis, or you implement, and it's the city fathers that implement these rules, where I think in McAllen, any subdivision that I build, I I have to have an HOA. And then the HOA, and the lawyer's not here, do we have a lawyer?
He is here.
But but but
Here must.
Just just in law school, and they've shared with me those books, they're about that thick, right? Where you've gotta follow all these rules, right? And that's more on the private.
So what I will say, jumping into it, if we go, this is a discussion, right, but if you all were to consider specifically ZBOA, the variance are out. The variance does run with the land in and of itself. I know other cities around, dealing with carports, they do, they go away from variances, they go to Special exceptions for carports specifically. So, meaning that it would not run with the land, so kind of going to your point, it would stick with that particular owner, and then if it's sold, it kinda leaves the new owner in limbo, because at that point, they're subject to the requirements as is on the property. But if we were to implement something like a variance route, a variance does run with the land, it would go to subsequent owners, so they would be subject, they wouldn't be able to be penalized, or the city wouldn't be able to say, okay, well, you're a new owner, now you need to do all this. No, the variance itself, if you are to go to that route, would run with the land itself. So the carport would be able to stay if approved by y'all, if it does go that route. But other cities, I know the mention of other cities around, other cities do different things, special exceptions. That's the main one that I was used to coming over here. I know, coming from another city, ZBOA deals with a lot less carports than I was used to over there, with another surrounding city. Another one, eighty percent of their ZBA agenda is strictly carports for whatever neighborhood. But we, it's different over here, because the UDC has different requirements, and at the same time, again, if we were to consider that variance route, that changes the dynamics a little bit. So just to, that's just some info for for y'all to consider, to see how you wanna move forward with it.
So so this is a tricky one. We we get this a lot. We we get people coming to us, just what you were saying, Jaime. There's already a carport down the street. I know there's lack of education to the to our citizens that they think they could just do what what the neighbor did on a weekend. Then we, my main concern, and I I think I've been one of the more vocal ones with you, Jaime, about having this meeting here, is the safety of all these makeshift, or whatever these carport things are. They start off as one thing, and like I told a lot of our citizens, when they come against with us here to, you know, I'm like, look, I understand you did your metalwork, I-beams, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, great, you dug in, et cetera. I said, but how do we know your neighbor's not gonna come in? Just do some regular four-by-four post, a foot into the ground, et cetera. We're gonna have what happened here years ago, when I talked to the citizens too, they're gonna knock over to the neighboring property, who approved this, the city did, or the city didn't, et cetera, and then what happened? There was a car there, Corvette that was valued a million dollars, and it just ripped it up, and what happened there? If it was up to me, I think I would ban carports. But then again, it's like, but everybody already has one. And then at what point do we govern a carport? Because I see one that we said no to on my call, yet it's still there. And it's like, okay, so who's gonna go and knock on the door for this character to say, hey, knock it down, we told you, you had ninety days to knock it down? And then he's gonna be like, okay, well, on what grounds do you all stand on to tell me to knock it down and for me to lose the thing? And we're gonna be like, well, you never got a permit for it, and you're on property line. And it starts like that, and the way I see it, even if we change the code completely for the city and not allow carports, then we have to educate the citizens that you can't put a carport, and they're gonna say, well, it's my, it's my right, et cetera, it's my land, all this and that. But the way we see it is, but tomorrow, it's gonna look like a Tianguis, or it's gonna look like a marketplace, where you go into these neighborhoods, and it's bum 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 bum, this guy has posts with this and that, and then the other one has the bare minimum, and then this one thought, you know what, like the other issue that, or the other one that came up on us, Mr. Jaime, that was here in town, that the citizen had a carport pretty much from property line to property line, the whole
Covering the whole thing?
And then the back, the same thing, and then he's like, why invested a million dollars with it? And we're like, well, sorry, you know, you never brought it up to us, you never even talked to us, and then we have the 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 neighboring property at the meeting, and they're saying, well, why does he get to do that and we can't? And then like I told that one citizen, I said, look, what we're trying to avoid is, today we're doing this carport. Tomorrow, for all we know, they're gonna wanna put a second floor on this carport and make it a living space, because why not? We already approved the easement setback for them to build a carport, and they're like, well, I'm already here, already have an I, a metal frame, I might as well put a little mid-level loft area up there, and then now we're open to a whole different world where, but we can't And then now we're open to a whole different world where, but we can't do that. Said who? Well, said us, but you have to knock it down. And then it opens up to a whole different thing. I think as a city, we, we need to just put a ban to carports as much as extreme as it sounds. But then again, at what point do we tell the rest of the people? Or we could just say, they got grandfathered in with the carports, they're built out, and they're gonna have to be... And then code enforcement goes out there. And then what, now they're acting as engineers to see if they, the project was done right? It's a, it's a very tricky one, and I feel that it needs to become more of a code, and then we need to educate the citizens. But also, we're gonna have a lot of the ones that were saying, the contractor came, he said, there's no big deal, already did six, seven of them for other people, and there was never an issue, and now the city's coming after it, but don't worry anyways. They're just gonna pretty much slap you in the hand and then get you off on your end, and, you know? And so we're back to it. I think that's why my main concern was to have the meeting was, we need to, I don't know, it's interesting cause then we had the other issue where we had people that came in, and then we see the past, and they're like, okay, this one got approved in twenty twenty-one. This one got approved in twenty twenty, this one got approved in twenty nineteen. And then it's just a chain of events that happens now that everybody wants a carport. And then we have the other spectrum where we have people coming in front of us, and we spoke as a board, right? And we said, cause people are coming to us with medical conditions. Well, it's cause I built a carport, cause I have some sort of skin, whatever. And I, we have to kind of remind ourselves, like, we're not doctors, we're not even here trying to touch any of that, that's none of our business. Yet we see a garage with, filled with everything, weight rooms and the whole nine. It's like, boy, if it was such a concern, but we're not allowed, right, to say like, if it's such a concern, why don't you clean out the garage and put your vehicles in there? You know, and it's, it's scary in a sense of that it's already happening, and I feel like a ban needs to happen from here on out. But then we have a lot of folks building on the weekends, and the code enforcement, it's only so many code enforcement officers that could only cover so much area, and... But if it was up to me, in my opinion, I think I would ban it from here on out, just because, I was just telling Mr. Mark here, I live in downtown, and we see that, but I said, imagine, there's hundreds and hundreds of homes in this area. Imagine everybody with the carport trying to maximize their properties. It just, it's gonna become a mess, it's gonna become dangerous, it's gonna become, and we know what's gonna happen. Today, we're gonna say eight feet, ten feet, before you notice, they're gonna be at six feet. And then they're gonna be like, well, it's cause I didn't know. And then everybody's gonna go with that, I didn't know, theory or whatever, and it's gonna be... I, I just don't feel that there's really a good solution other than banning, and then just, then we have to go after everybody else, and then it's like, at what point do we...
The ban idea should have happened way back.
Yeah.
And now that you've got so many people out there, and like you said, and you say, they'll bill them in a weekend, man. And then they're gonna say, okay, sue me, man. And then they're gonna, now we're gonna have another problem, where's legal back here? They're, you know, they're gonna, we have to take them to municipal court and go through all that process, it's a load of expense. I think we have to, my idea, and, and for what it's worth, is, is to reach out. You know, where do you reach these, these contractors that are doing these things? In Dowell County Builders Association, go to their meeting and say, hey, you know, we'd like to put something in your newsletter, we'd like to make a presentation, you know, at least to get the word out to the builders. Whether they ignore it or not, well, who knows, right? At least it's a start. Maybe put something on a water bill, hey, adding, making an addition to your home. Your water bills, you can put whatever you want on them. Put a little note, make an addition to your home, please contact planning and zoning. You know, any, and any kind of improvements to your home, call P and Z. Just, and maybe they'll read it, maybe they won't, but if you don't pick and choose, and then we put it on the Edinburgh channel, you know, advertising, those kind of things, public service announcement to let people know that there is a, you know, an enforcement of these, these things. But I, I think it's too late to ban them. I, I think, you know, we're beyond that. Now we're just having to deal with these guys individually, and what do you do with the ones that are already there? Where do we draw the line and say, okay, these guys are okay, and now from now on, nobody... If you're gonna get the same battle at, at zoning board of adjustments, hey, well, the guy's already got one, the guy's already got one.
Well, I, I see two, two issues. One is, do we have any enforcement? I mean, the, the, the mobile, the...
The RV?
The RV. Obviously, there's a lot of rules on that, no one's making them take it off. So there's no enforcement, we're not enforcing. It's not that there's no enforcement, there's...
The lack of enforcement.
The lack of enforcement. The other thing is, just because they build it, doesn't necessarily mean we have to approve it. Because we, I hate the idea that people come in and, and are asking for variances, oh, because it's already there. I already bought it, and it was like that. Well, maybe you shouldn't buy it, maybe you shouldn't have built it, maybe... I mean, it's, it's, it's kinda sad when you start denying people that come for permits. But all these people that did it on the weekend, oh, fantastic, you, you, we'll give you a variance. It's not fair. So...
I'm gonna ask the council to move you to ZBA.
Is, is there a way that we can have? I think we're all in agreement that we don't really, nobody likes these things, right? I, I, talking from, to my members, I don't, I don't think anybody likes them. They're not good aesthetically, and then there, there's safety issues with them, right? We don't know, these things didn't get, a lot of them didn't get structurally engineered properly, and there's no certificates out, there are approvals. So the issue with us is, the person comes in, and it's better to ask for forgiveness than for permission, right?
Exactly.
And so they, they, they build it, and they come and they pull on our heartstrings, and it's an old lady there saying, I have some sort of medical condition, and we're looking at this lady, and the last thing we wanna do, or the hardest thing to do, is tell her, knock it down, right? So for us, what would help us is, in my opinion, have it filtered in-house. In other words, if we see, if staff sees that there isn't a real hardship, because there should be a hardship, right? If this is coming to us, if there's no real hardship, then stop it there. If you guys see an extraordinary circumstance, then bring it to us, right? So I think there should be a filter, and that would help us a lot. Because, like I said, so many people come to us, the thing's already built, and we're the guys that are saying, I'm sorry, you gotta knock it down. And that's, that's really tough to do.
And then there's the other side of the coin where now we're gonna have a pharmacist or a doctor that's handing out these letters for X amount, saying, oh, what do you need? Oh, it's cause I get headaches, okay, here's your hardship. And it becomes a, it's a tricky one, you know, cause it's now... But I agree with you, you know, that it puts us in a, I think also the ten-foot easement setbacks, we need to really be on that. But it's not gonna cover my F-two-fifty, X, um, three-thousand, whatever trucks they have. It's still ten feet, cause we do that for fences, we do that for, for visibility purpose in a neighborhood. And I think it's, it's just gonna have to be more of a permit thing, and then go and, man, it's tricky, cause even if you go to the ones that went over those ten feet, we're gonna, those we have to really go about the code enforcement to, hey, like we did with that gentleman, hey, push it back, at least the post, even if you, but then again, the overhang, is it allowable over the ten feet? Or do we do what City of McAllen is, that nothing has to be over the, the setback, even if it's a overhang? So we could also implement that, and then do it through permits, and then get, go through them as a carport needs to be done. There has to be, I would imagine, a windstorm certificate to it, even if it's a ten-square feet, twenty, whatever square feet. But that way, there's an engineer involved that's gonna be sealing these things, and it, it, it keeps the city from being responsible for, for us handing permits to these people, and then there's an engineer involved that's, he's the one that signed off on whatever was gonna be done the way it is. Cause then we start losing control of, you know, what's building what. And then at what point are we gonna, as a city, gonna go out? Of course, inspectors go out there to verify things, but I would rather have that responsibility on someone that's licensed engineer to seal it and say, okay, this type of carport, it's gonna be this material, and it's gonna be this, this, that, and third, and here's a seal for my windstorm fort. And we have that on file. Tomorrow, something happens, they got, it's, we approved it on these conditions, and that's what it was. But with the education, I like what Mr. Elias is saying about sending maybe with the water bill something, hey, from here on out, and just kind of push it for a good four or five months, to where it's like, if you wanna do something to your house, you have to get with the city. You can't just do whatever you guys want, and then like Michael's saying, ask for forgiveness later type scenario, you know? It's just, we're gonna do it, and then it's, you know, and then we get the citizens coming in, like, it's been thirty years that I've been here forever, and, you know, which we appreciate. And then we're gonna have the neighboring houses, well, I don't think they should do it, and then... So as long as we do, and I agree with you, Mr. Jaime, get some, just a building restriction of it. You can't do more than ten feet, but it doesn't cover my truck, I'm sorry. You don't have that size of a lot, well, that's what you're able to do. And then we keep everybody more in line with the neighborhood look and everything, cause then, yeah.
So touching real quick on, on a few key points, right? You mentioned it right now, keeping in, in line in the subdivision, the aesthetics look the same, right? Going back to a little bit what Mr. Govey was saying, was maybe having something in writing saying that you need to stick within this, you know, you can't build this far, you can't do that. Technically, we do have a front yard setback, and it's established on the subdivision plot, right? You have a twenty-five-foot front setback, right? Now, the recent change with the UDC has allowed them to at least encroach ten feet just for the carport, right? Anything other than that, then they would have to come for a variance. But technically, that document or that restriction that Mr. Govey is asking for is our front yard setback. So essentially, all the houses can be in line, right? They wanted to come in, you can encroach ten feet, but that's all that we're gonna give you, right? Now, you had also mentioned maybe encroachment over to the utility easements. We don't allow for encroachment over the utility easements on single-family residential. On multifamily, we do allow for an overhang, right? The post actually has to be within the front setback, right, of the actual multifamily apartment complex. But the actual overhang itself can encroach over the utility easement, as long as it leaves an actual clearance if at any point in time our utilities department needs to go in with the back or anything like that.
Why di, why different for residential and multifamily?
Multifamily, what we've been seeing a lot lately is smaller lots, they wanna maximize the lot area.
Why, I understand it's a smaller lot, and they're trying to do more with it, but why would you allow an overhang over an easement on a multifamily, but not allow an overhang over an easement on a single family?
That was a change that was done during the UDC, when our UDC committee, as far as when it came up with the multifamily.
Those people wanna use their lot also, it's just, and that's, and that's the issue. I, I think, I, I agree with what they're, what they're saying. If everybody wants it, obviously, everybody wants it. Maybe what we need to do is permitted, but let it be permitted where it's constructed safely. So it, it protects the city, the people get what they want, make them come in for a permit. And just because they build it, doesn't, doesn't work, but they come in for a permit, it's, it's with a, with a windstorm study, it's structurally designed. Why not? As long as it meets a certain...
Correct.
A certain setback, not necessarily the front setback, maybe the ten-foot additional, but the sides.
Correct.
Overhang, over, uh, over easements. If, if, if they want it, if it's safe, I would say...
Let's be honest, I mean, most of the carports that we've seen, some of the variances that come before the zoning board of adjustments, they're within the older subdivisions, Edinburgh Original Townsite, those lost, renew fifty by one forty-two deep, right? Houses, these houses have been built in the years past, even be, probably before I was born, right? And there's like a three-foot separation between these houses. So what they're wanting to do is they're wanting to extend the carport all the way up to the front, and we're telling them, I'm sorry, you can't. Previous UDC didn't allow it at all, period. With the new change, we said, okay, after speaking with the committee, we'll give you some leeway, and we'll allow the ten feet, right? At this point, that's where you start seeing a lot of these variances, because the houses are already at twenty feet in these older subdivisions. So it's either you want to allow for the carports within the older subdivisions, based off of how they were built back in the day, right? Where the houses are practically up to the property line, or just don't allow it, it is what it is, right? But we also have our fire department here that we discussed when we said, how you mentioned the side setback, right? We wanna have that building separation in between the buildings, we wanna have the safety. During the review of the building permit, right, and correct me if I'm wrong, building, but anything over two hundred square feet requires a windstorm design, right? So if they come in, they pull the permit with us, planning and zoning department reviews and makes sure that they fall within the setbacks, right? Make sure they fall within the front setback, they're not encroaching over any easements or anything like that. The actual posts need to be outside of the easement within the setback. If it's anything over two hundred square feet, then it goes back to what Mr. Garza was saying, was that it needs to have the windstorm design and the seal, and that's reviewed by our building department. And then based off of the material, that's when we also pass it over to our fire department as well. So that they're going through the review process, they are going through the review process, but it's where you start seeing these variance requests in the older subdivisions where the houses were built back in the day, a little bit closer to where the, the right-of-way is. You know, these lots are a lot smaller, so that's where you start getting these requests. So it's either, do we start allowing it, do we not allow it in certain neighborhoods, and not newer subdivisions? We already have it established, these newer subdivisions, usually the front setback is what, twenty, twenty-five feet? We're at least giving you that ten-foot leeway by the UDC. Now, if the HOA doesn't approve it, then that's a civil matter between the property owner and the HOA. With us, as long as they meet our requirements, as long as they get the approval from the building department and fire department, we're okay with it. But we're giving you that ten feet already. That's in the newer subdivision.
I think, I think there needs to be a, a sort of acknowledgement, and I agree with the, with the water bill idea because when someone buys a new home, they change ownership, right? So they have to come in here, or they have to call and notify the city that they are the new owner, right? And the issue electronically-wise would be for the older folk, like, for example, my parents, they're seventy-five years old. But I can tell you that my parents, if they receive a letter from the city of Edinburgh on the water bill, and in the water bill, there's a letter in there, and it says, moving forward, if you have an existing carport, you may receive this notice, but moving forward, you, we are not allowing carports to be built, et cetera, whatever. My parents will come to the city and have somebody explain it to them in better terms, and if, if it's a code, they're gonna sign it. I mean, if it's, if it's something that the city implemented, oh, well, you know, they're gonna end up signing it. For the newer generation, for the younger folk that pays online, like I do, I pay, I pay online, then there needs to be maybe a window prior to making that payment, saying, hey, this is a new notice. Please read it, have them read it, acknowledge, initial sign, and making sure that they are now aware of that new rule. I think that would be the easiest thing, send out a letter to all the citizens of Edinburgh, all the communities, and make them aware of the change, whenever the change does happen, that they acknowledge. And then, again, new owners, the house sells, the new owner, it's part of the packet. Hey, this is the letter, just making you aware, right? If you have a smaller lot, and it's not allowed.
And there's multiple, multiple forms of communication that we can provide to the public, right? As if we do decide to make a change to the UDC, we do have to go through the public hearing process, we have to take it before the planning and zoning commission, through city council, right? So we do have all that. We can also, even if it sends out flyers within the water bill, we can also do a PSA, right? Post it on our Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, we can post it everywhere and anywhere to get the message out, right?
Most of the variances that we see coming through ZBA are for the older neighborhoods, right?
Yes.
So I think the water bill's a great idea, because older people, they look at their mail, they send off, they go into the utility department to pay, or they send off a check. And then for people like me, for the younger people, I guess, I do automatic payment, but I do get a receipt, email receipt, and if there's something in there, sometimes I look at it, sometimes I don't, right? Most of the times I don't, but if I were to look at it, it'd be there, right? So, um...
Just a subject line, making sure... So now they'll send you a separate email that says something about carports, and then the, on the water bills, to send off a red paper or blue, something that's gonna catch attention, like, oh, something serious.
Or even on the water, can we print it on the water bill, where they open the water bill?
We have the option to put...
To minimize costs.
We have an option to put on the utility bills a certain amount of verbiage, right? Even the link to access it.
Directly on the water bill below.
If, if I may, I oversee the water bills, and that's very limited item, it's a great idea, but we already have something in place. And again, we try to push this, if everybody goes and signs up to three-one-one, you automatically go on to the notice. You get your notices, if there's something happening in the city, a notice will come to your email, if you sign up for three-one-one.
Yes, I was gonna say, my parents...
In my experience, nowadays, nobody's reading the mail out anymore. No matter what we do, we even have, have y'all have noticed that we actually send out a monthly city letterhead, a city letter? It comes to your mail. So we sent one out actually every month, and we try to add there. It's, it's in every mailbox, all the residents that...
It's like, it's like a newspaper, right?
Yeah, it's like a little newspaper, so that's where we put our public notices. On the water bill, it's showing now that really nobody reads the water bill, and we have a limited space that we can put on there because I do stormwater, I do any UDC different codes, we do add them, and it's a small line at the very bottom, which we've been fighting with our provider that sends that out, and it's, 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 it's not becoming effective. Everybody, the most effective one we get is on your cell phone.
I think you have to have that prompt, that acknowledgement on, online, and I tell you because for example, us that do real estate, we're a part of the association, right, of McAllen. We're quick to get a notice as soon as we sign in, if we're, if we've been fine, if we have a balance, if we have, and it makes sure that we acknowledge it. And so I think that's kind of the same route that you would have to take on... And it makes sure that we acknowledge it, and so I think that's kind of the same route that you would have to take on the online portal for, for the water. And again, for the older folk that don't, I can tell you, um, the older folk from seventy years old, sixty-five years old up, they read the, the paper, they read that bill. If not, I, I tell you, my parents paid the, the, the water bill and, and the light bill one day before, but they have it there, and they have the check, and they have it, you know, and they're just waiting for that, uh, for, for that expiration date.
I agree with that completely, I wouldn't, I wouldn't discount that. I wouldn't discount and say we should put it on the water bill, maybe you can print it in red or something that attracts their attention, as opposed to looking like the, all the information that comes on the bill, something different that would attract someone to, older people like me, to the, to read that bill and, and say, hey, look, there's a notice here. And he, and again, it goes out monthly, so, and again, Michael, you may not see that thing this month, but maybe next month you'll see it, or the next month you'll read it.
Right.
But if you, if you hammer and keep it going, consistent with that, then there's more of a chance that somebody will get notice of it. And somebody will say, gee, I was, I was gonna put that carport up, maybe I should call the city. And if it's one or two or three, that's great, that's three we don't have to deal with, right?
So, so I'd like to just touch on a couple of points real quick. Great ideas, guys, thank you so much, we're, we're, we're writing all this stuff down, and I think this is some great solutions. One that I heard, which is, uh, and, and I appreciate you saying this, Michael, is the staff screening these before they even come to you, right? Cause in other communities, uh, that I know of, the staff is very stringent on, you don't even make it past first base if you're not meeting the requirements to get there. And the state law, at least in the zoning board of adjustments, is pretty clear as far as what you need to meet criteria before you even go to the board, right? Previously, I, I, I guess I'm here more as a historian, cause I've been here for a while, uh, it was thought like, you know, take them all. If they apply, take them all to the board, right? Cause that's due process, right? But there is a provision in there that says that you have to meet some of these criteria before you even get here. So I, I, I'm glad to hear that, and I'll explore that with our attorneys.
That goes back to defining hardship, right? How you define hardship, and I'm sure that's, that's the hard part there.
Right, I, 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 I get it, and, and in the previous philosophy, like I said, was as soon as somebody applies, you take them because that's due process, right? But my argument to that at that time was, well, hold on, if they don't even meet these criteria, and this is back in the day, if it's purely financial, the law actually said you could not take it, you should not take it, if it's purely a financial interest. So I, I think we probably should visit that, and we can visit with, with our legal counsel on whether or not it should even go there. Now, obviously, some people might be getting phone calls if we don't take it there, um, but, but at least we have the law to back us up and say, hey, look, you're not meeting one of these criterias for you to even get here, right? So that's one of the possible solutions to reduce the number of carport issues. The other thing that we came up with, at least, uh, and we have this provision that was in our old code, and it's now in our code, and I'll, I'll bounce it to him in a second, but, basically what it said was fences in the front yards, okay? Fences in the front yards in downtown is very common, everybody has a hurricane fence, right? Well, our code, the old iteration of the code, and I believe some of the new iterations too, would say that you could not fence your front yard. Unless there were other neighbors that you had within the community that already had a fence in your front yard, right? So we would evaluate that, we would look at that, and if there was already three or four or five, ten of your neighbors that already had fences in the front yards, whether they got a variance or whether they weekend wired the thing, right? But they had it, right? Then the staff would grant it, still have to get a permit, still have to go through the construction process of submitting it and us vetting it to make sure that it was safe and met bill, minimum building requirements, but we allowed it by right. You're, you, you have the right to do this because everybody else did it. Now, obviously, in a new subdivision, that wouldn't work because somebody wouldn't have a fence like that in the front yard. So we would say you have to go through an exemption because you're gonna start a trend that's not gonna stop, everybody's gonna have it, right? So we thought about carports under that lens, which is to say, hey, uh, in a new subdivision that's being constructed, no one has one. So right now, you do have to go through the exception process, right? And more than likely, if this board was consistent with their application of that process, it's, no, you can't, right? However, just understand that if the board did grant it, then that's gonna start a cascade of other carports within that subdivision, and you're gonna change the aesthetic of the way that it looks, right? So again, we go back to like older subdivision, like in downtown district, right? You have some carports that already exist, right, they're already there, right? Whether permitted or exception, well, if somebody wanted to put a carport, maybe they wouldn't have to go for the exception. And we could build that into our code, just like we did the fences in the example that I gave you. So that was one of the solutions we thought of.
Yeah, um, we've heard a lot of different ideas here tossed, tossed around, Eliseau says wants to ban them, but then he says, well, maybe they engineer them.
I think a ban, I don't know.
I also like what Rita's saying about the ten feet, and if, and even what I have noticed is that the citizens will look at the mail when we, they send out, uh, the ZB, when we do the zoning changes or what have you, and it's a separate mail, just like the tax companies that send you all these orange letters and all sorts of pink letters. But I've noticed that citizens will look at the ones that come in from the city of Edinburgh directly with an orange letter inside or a red one saying, you know, they're gonna open it up to see what it is that the city's trying to find them for, you know? Worst case, right off the bat, you're gonna think, oh, I did something wrong, or they're trying to find me for something. They're gonna look at it, and it's gonna talk about the carport initiative now. I do feel that the ten feet, and just put a restriction or like a, a code to it, and then we're gonna have the ten feet, but not allow any overhang over that ten-foot setback, cause then we're gonna go right back to what, what, what we see a lot, right? With a lot of these metal buildings, we could do overhangs of six, seven, eight feet, and we're still, as long as the engineer is sealing off on it with the I-beams, et cetera, we're gonna have, yeah, we'll have the post at ten, and then we're gonna have an overhang of.
Another ten.
Another ten or eight, cause it's gonna be allowed.
And I'll tell you, word gets around, uh, and, uh, y'all know, right, you're all in the industry. Once the board takes a firm stance and says, you know what, it's ten feet, ten feet is the rule, that's what it's gonna be, period, right? It will get around to the community once you start denying some of these exceptions that go beyond that ten feet. It, it, I'll tell you, cause it's, cause it's happened, it's like right now, I can tell you, in McAllen, I know you don't get past the director, the director says, you're, you're exactly what you said. If the director says this doesn't meet the criteria of the law, you're not going to the zoning board of adjustment, you don't even get scheduled for the meeting. At least, that's what I've been told, right?
Yes.
So once, once a stance is taken, and it's firm, and the decisions are consistent, right? I, I'll tell you what, you might not even get those exceptions because these builders, whoever that, they just know it's not gonna help.
I agree, and the city of McAllen, we built a home, and we were so used to doing overhangs of twenty-four inches on these townhomes or even homes, and the city of McAllen stood their ground.
Yep.
You can't do it, but, 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 it's cause the look of the house, no, we can't have anything, but it's on the second floor, nothing. And they just ducked to their gun, and they said, you can't build it like this, and if you're gonna do this, then put your home more in there and leave that twenty-four-inch overhang where you're allowed to do it.
I mean, but again, and I know it's hard, cause, and it's, it's easy for you, Jay, you're not making the call, I get it, right? As staff, we're gonna hear it, I'm, I'm telling you now, right? Because even people from McAllen will call us and say, how come you guys are allowing these eaves and these, well, that's what we've done traditionally, time after time after time, right? And you'll get those developed, oh, you know what, I'm just not gonna build here in, in McAllen then. And I'm like, I get it, you know.
So, so you said if it's a new subdivision, you wouldn't allow it, right? So then, but what happens if they do, build it weekend style? Are we gonna make them take it off?
That would be the correct thing to do, honestly, they did it without a permit, you don't know how it's structured. In order for us to allow it now, and let's say you do allow it, they're still gonna have to get an engineered drawing.
Anybody to take anything off?
Well, here's, here's, okay, let's talk about that too. In the years that I've been here, I think there's only been one that actually, we actually tore it down, right? And here's a, here's a interesting point for you guys too. When you make a decision, it's very important that when the zoning board of adjustment makes a call, that you make it time-bound. Cause I had a guy who they told tear it down, but they didn't give him a time. So he obtained a permit to tear it down, and then obtained a renewal to tear it down, and obtained another renewal to tear it down. Six months, six months, six months, six months, six months, and guess what, it's still up right now, I know it's still up right now. But the person that was complaining about it initially brought to our attention, they moved out of the subdivision, right? So, so, sure, but I mean, that's still, people want, I mean, we live in a your-way, right-of-way society, right? They wanna, once you make a call and they don't want it to be denied, they want it torn down immediately, right? Now, you gotta be respectful of that.
I was fined from my association for fifty dollars the other day, and I had to correction because they, I had one thing to say to get a resolve, and they weren't giving me that.
Yeah.
I showed them, hey, I resolved it, and they emailed me back, say, that's why you say enforce a time line.
So, so, so I appreciate, you know, you, you make a decision, I just be, be cognizant of the decision, because these EBA meetings, right, quasi judicial, it could be in court, right, you're making a decision that, yes, they could tear it down, right? But it's important to say a limitation thirty days, forty-five days, sixty days, and be consistent with that in the application of that rule, so that way staff knows. Cause yes, we could use code enforcement to go after them, we could then go through the court system and legal system, and that takes a long time, uh, to go through, right? Uh, but we can do those things, and we will, right, if, if we have to, right? But you're right, you do get these weekend warriors like we talked about, they're gonna go out there and, you know, whether it's a honeydew or a knot, or I just did it, right? I get it, uh, and, and I feel terrible about that because some of these contractors that build these things should tell them, hey, look, well, yeah, yeah, you're contracting, let me put that permit fee in your estimate, and then let me go get a permit from the city, cause they know better. But they don't, right, and they build it quickly, and now we're living with that decision, right? So, uh, yes, you, you can make that decision for them to tear it down, they still have a challenge, they could file in court, they have ten days to file that, right? And then challenge the decision. The last, I have gone through that process, it was a fence issue, somebody had built a fence ten foot high. Uh, their neighbor was like, they did that without a permit, I'm not sure it's gonna fall over my, my, it's gonna fall on top of my grandfather who's out there watering the, the lawn, right? That case took three and a half years to resolve, right? And eventually, they told them, reduce it down to six feet, cause what he had done is ten foot on this side, ten foot on the opposite side, and eighteen foot on the back, because he was showing Disney films to his young daughters in the back, it was like a theater he had, right? And it, it was, I gotta be honest, it was pretty cool, right? If I was a kid, I'd love to see those movies on the back, but he did that, and it looked beautiful. But we didn't have a permit on file, so I didn't know how it was properly anchored, right? So it took three and a half years to resolve, and what the judge said, cause I had to go testify, was reduce it to six feet on each side. You can leave the one in the back, just submit a permit and get those drawings engineered, so that way we know it's properly anchored. And he did that, and it's up right now, okay? So why I say it's important, right, is because, yes, they're gonna appeal it, there's a process behind it. But we wanna, we wanna try to come up with a way, and I, and I appreciate you saying what you say, cause that's important. That would be a way to filter the number of requests that come to you, and we can talk to legal about that. But also building in something where they don't necessarily have to come to even us, right, as far as a denial. It could be an approval, but an approval with conditions, right? Just like I gave you that fence example. I don't know if that's palatable to you all, if that's something that you think would be okay. Uh, I have also seen in the past where as a zoning board of adjustment, you could literally give an order to the department head in writing, which we could record, that would say, these decisions of this type, you would make the decision, and it doesn't have to come to us. That happened years ago here, Juan Lopez was the director of planning and zoning. When he was here, there was encroachments that were happening that were twelve inches and below, eight inches, seven inches, right? Well, the board at that time said, you know what, you're bringing these encroachments, they're so small, like, why aren't you just, well, we tried, but the bank's telling us, Mr. Lopez, you're here today, you're gone tomorrow, I'm sorry, we want something a little bit more permanent than that, right? But with that board document that was recorded, that was something that those banks would be able to accept as far as a minor encroachment. So that is another option we would have also, where you're basically kicking it back to the staff and saying, hey, this is something that's so minor, we're not even gonna hear it. The department head can make the decision.
And it's gonna be an uphill climb from now, and we have to, we're, we're all in agreement, right, that it's an uphill.
Sure.
In the sense of citizen education, because we got that also, where we had a person, which, cause we don't know, and you guys don't really let us know. And it's gonna be a matter of time that we're gonna have to send these individual letters, I still keep on saying, like the red ones. So they could start making it a thing, hey, Vecina or neighbor, did you just get the letter from the city saying something about carports? Okay, so it kinda starts being more of a communication amongst citizens, like, hey, you wanna do a carport? Oh, remember you got a letter, but we're gonna have to, I'm just saying my opinion, right?
No, it's a great idea.
Stick to it for a couple of months of, here's another letter of the carports, remember the carports, remember the carports. So that way, when the, this contractor comes into the picture, hey, okay, I will do it for X amount, all right, just make sure you get the permit. Why? Cause the city's hounding me about these letters that come in, saying that if we're gonna do carports, so now we start educating the citizen of like, hey, guys, and then we're gonna do our adjustment on the code, ten feet, no, no encroachment, but it's cause a pillar, okay, well then set your pillar one foot back and give us that soft fit of a foot if you want, but on the ten feet. And then that way, as a city, we're like, hey, you guys want carports? You guys are more than welcome to have carports, we're all for it, because the moment that we're like, you can't do it, and the ban or something, we're gonna have people with pitchforks like, hey, well, I wanna do it, cause other people are like, oh, no, we're good with it.
We would do a very lengthy public information dispersal, like we would advise. I mean, the last time we've changed the code, we, we had joint meetings, we had public hearings, we went out to the Rotary Club and to the Kiwanis and to, we went to all these people, we blasted, and then we gave a grace period. We said, okay, once this comes into effect, we're gonna give a hundred and eighty days before we actually start to take an enforcement process. So we do a very lengthy campaign, there are three water providers in Edinburgh, by the way, obviously, right? Sherry Land, North Alamo, and the city, so the water bill would only target our accounts. So we'd have to do, uh, to try to get the word out, different types of public notification, we would do all those things, right? For sure, I mean, that, that's just a process that we followed before, and the actual, the law before we even modify the code would force us to do some of those things too. We just wanna make sure, at least at this meeting where it was supposed to be, is for us to kind of just come to some sort of a consensus on, how do you think we should be approaching this, do you think that's a reasonable way? The fence rule, do you think some of these other possible solutions that we provided in, in, in here and your slides make sense to you all, right? Before we, we wouldn't even move forward, because you could tell us, you know, Jay, go fly kind on Friday, it doesn't make any sense, you know, the people aren't gonna go for it. This is what we think is the solution, or we've heard, so, um, yeah.
I'd like to hear from you, Ruben, you're, you're involved with the Builders Association. What do you think, or who do you think is building these?
Thank you.
And what do you think some of the.
It's usually, uh, the people that are building all this stuff are, they only do that particular thing, they're not real contractors or, or GCs. They are buying from, and that, and I was gonna bring it up, we need to make contact with Rodko, Mueller, all these people that provide all this industrial supplies, metal supplies, because they're the ones that are, that, the, this contractor will go and buy from them. So if we let those people know, maybe, we'll let them know, you know what, this is the consequences for all these people, just let them know that if they're gonna be doing something in Edinburgh, for them to be careful, go get a permit, or go talk to the, to, well, well, talk to the city of Edinburgh and get the permit. If not, they're gonna, there's gonna be fines, penalties, and whatnot. I think that's the best way to do that also, to approach it, because if we just go to the general contractors, STBA or RGVBA, we go tell them, hey, you all can be building, uh, carports, everybody's gonna be telling you, well, we don't build carports, cause we don't. Wouldn't, I've never built a carport for anyone, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, and we build the houses, we come get the permits for that. But this welder guys, they are not regular GCs. So we gotta go and approach these companies and let them know what the restrictions are, at least for the city of Edinburgh.
Excellent idea.
And Jay, and I'm, if, if I may, unfortunately, and you guys probably know this better than I do, but unfortunately, there's many times where a builder, contractor, somebody on the side goes in, as much as, I know a lot of the talk right now is on notice. Unfortunately, as much notice as we can give, no matter what, there's gonna be that builder, that contractor, that side guy that's not gonna give that notice. And I saw that a lot with enforced, on the enforcement side, where they would say, hey, this has been up for ten, fifteen years, I was never told I had to get a permit. And then they would say, I had builder X, and they never told me, or they said they were going to. So the, the notice side is good of it, but I think just the unfortunate reality is that's not always gonna be told to the people. So I think there does have to be, there do have to be some rules in place to be able to say zoning department can look at this and just say approval, or this does have to, once it passes those parameters, whether it be, I saw some possible solutions on the screen, if it goes past this four hundred square foot mark, if that's what everyone agrees to or talks about, if it goes past this, then it would go to ZB away, because the notice part, and I get it, perfect world, notice is supposed to help everyone, they are supposed to be aware of this, but the truth of the matter is not everyone's going to. So having these rules in place, it's gonna help with that, and then also on the enforcement side of it, right? A lot of talk right now, I don't wanna take up too much, I want the discussion to be from y'all, but on the enforcement side in, say municipal court, I handle those. And the stance that myself, Ms. Olise, and I believe city management, um, has discussed is we're not looking to ever be just strict and hard and say, you're in violation, you gotta pay this fine. At the end of the day, if something can come into compliance, or if they can go before the board, that's also what we're looking for, compliance is the key. So if we have these rules in place, and then they go outside those parameters, they go to you, on the enforcement side of it, for illegal carports that are currently being built, I'm taking the stance as the city prosecutor that we are willing to, to work with you, and hopefully you get that enforcement. And if not, there's other avenues that can be taken, the board, possible teardown, but first, city right now, through, through me, through my enforcement on any municipal ordinance side of it, is. is we are trying to, to work with you, to kinda help with that notice, right? If you didn't know before, now I'm telling you, as somebody, as a prosecutor for the city, I'm telling you, yes, there is this in place. These are the rules, here are the avenues you can go to try to get in compliance. So I just wanna throw that out there, I want you guys, I mean, it's directed, you guys are gonna make the decisions, but there's a lot of different avenues we can go, if somebody doesn't have that notice, or somebody says, I didn't know about this. Well, then they come through, through me, through zoning, and we explain it to them, and they still can go through the proper avenues to get it in compliance or within the city regulations.
I'm just glad we're having this meeting, it's gonna be an uphill, and thank you, I agree with that. It's gonna be education, because we let it go for so long, where people just thought, oh, well, they don't, we don't need permits, because everybody's doing it. And now we're having as a city here, a meeting today, and we're having now to start educating them, like, you do need permits, and then the word of mouth is gonna start, hopefully out of the five people, two, three people, and then eventually we're gonna get to a point, but I'm glad that we're trying to wrangle it in right now, before we completely lose control, because you're right. Housing is going up in pricing, lots are getting smaller, we have all these other things that are in the mix. But if we, and if we didn't wrangle it up right now, I think we would be completely losing control of it. Once we start sending all these notices out as a city, like I, I mentioned, on a separate note, maybe not on the, on the, on the water bill, people are gonna start talking about it, and then it's gonna, maybe a year from now, people are gonna be like, oh, yeah, no, for a carport, they're cool with it. As long as you go to the city, just like they allow you to build a home, you're able to do a carport. And then, of course, if there's restrictions in the neighborhood, well, that's out of the question, and like, I'm sorry, I.
Jay.
Jay, as mentioned, like, you know what, they're gonna go through staff, you're not meeting the guidelines, get out, come back when you meet these guidelines right here, and then we start, you know, now whatever's.
Education.
For the record, that is what I said, he's right, get out.
Uh, that's, you know, I think that's where we, we now need to catch up with all these years of, you know, because we did, we have gotten people, I didn't know that, and, well, they haven't told us anything about it, the city never, and, and the way we see it as a city is like, why is it that if I wanna do a fireplace in the back, or some sort of pergola, or, I have to, I automatically know, I need to come and talk to the city for this, even though it's an ornamental pergola, et cetera, but I still need to get a permit for that. So now you mean to tell me you didn't think you could, you had to do that for a full carport? And they're gonna say, well, it's because the neighbors, they all did it, and then the contractors.
I'm doing it the right way, they did it the wrong way, and you're punishing me because I'm doing it the right way?
And like Ms. Ruben was saying, you know, it's, uh, not all, it, those guys, a lot of those builders that do those carports are a dime a dozen, there's a bunch of them, you know? Some offer them for five hundred bucks, other offer them, you know, they're all over the place, all over Facebook, all over anything. And I just feel we need to just educate the, the citizen, and it's gonna take us a while, and it's gonna be a lot of headaches, but I think we're in the right path, and we're trying to put a stop, or at least some order to all this, because we are seeing it more and more, and it's gonna continue being more and more, and it's.
I just have a quick question, I think, very good feedback, and I think it's great ideas, I think the filtering process is, is important. And our, as a board, being consistent with our, our decision-making, following those recommendations, I think is very important. But I, I also, I, I know that compliance is, is really important, and thank you, Ben, for bringing that up, that's been on my mind. I know that several individuals have kinda mentioned the compliance part of it. Enforcement, if, can, can you walk me through that enforcement process? Because I've heard of a situation where we, there was denied an individual, and it's still, that carport's still upright. How, is there a complete enforcement of all these decisions? And if there is, what steps are being taken, what, run me through the process, Ben, if you can, I think it's for the attorney, city attorney, to maybe answer this one. As far as, you mentioned that there is probably maybe a citation, maybe a five hundred dollar fine. And, and, and if, let's assume for a minute that they decide, well, I'll pay the fine, is there any enforcement on actually taking it down? And when is that done?
Yeah, so enforcement side of it, it is right now under the ordinances, that any violation of any zoning regulations in the city, it would be up to a five hundred dollar fine, it is heard in municipal court, so that's the parameter for a Class C violation in the state of Texas. Code enforcement is a big part of that, where the department does go out, they see a violation in place, they do obviously have that discretion to cite the individual. But again, it can be something where if a citation isn't given, if we're going back to the education side of it with rules in place, it can be something where the code enforcement officers or building officials, or somebody from the planning department, where they go in and they actually educate and give the, I'm gonna use the word violator for lack of a better term at this point, the person in violation. They give them that education and say, hey, this is an avenue you can go. Right now, it does, it doesn't meet the zoning requirements based on A, B, and C, but just based on that, they can be heard in front of the zoning board, giving all those different avenues of what they can do. But a citation by code enforcement is an avenue that, that can be moved forward on, that is laid out in the ordinances themselves, so it is a fine amount of up to five hundred dollars for any zoning violation.
Is that the final decision, that, that, I guess, the consequence of violating one of the decisions, you know, that has been made by the board?
So for the city side, as far as enforcement, that, that would be, in my mind, the, the main one. That citation, or the summons to court, or if they aren't in regulation with going the proper avenues of the zoning board, or any board that it were to go in front of. One avenue the city does have is the, the citation method, but that's at the discretion of the officer.
So they don't have to tear down the carports?
So that's, in order to come into compliance, if, say, hypothetically, they go before, before y'all, and at that point, you guys still deny them, then the carport would be in violation, right? So then at that point, the city, through code enforcement, their code enforcement officers does have the discretion to continue citing. The way the code's also written is every day there is a violation present, every day, it is a, a separate and subsequent violation. So it could be, today's the thirtieth, if something's known, there's a citation on the thirtieth, it could be the thirty-first. Now, not to say that that is gonna happen, again, that's at the discretion of the officer, but that is how the code's written, that it can be. But one option for teardown, to come into, to compliance with the city code, obviously is, would not have, you would not have that violation on your premises anymore, so that could be an option that even I can explain to individuals that come into court. Right now, you are in violation of this, in order to, to come into compliance, because the zoning board, they've already made the decision that you cannot have these, you cannot have this built outside the parameters of the zoning laws. Then at that point, you can possibly come into compliance by completely taking down the structure, and your property at that point's in compliance.
So I've been here the past three years, there's been three ZBA cases where people have been ordered to remove their structures. I know that one of them was retrofitted to comply, but I'll get status reports on the other two, and I'll present it at the next, not tonight's meeting, but the one after tonight's meeting, the one in August, to give you guys a follow-up on those two cases. I wanted to go over some possible solutions, we've been tossing around a lot of ideas, but some of these have already been touched upon, but there's others on there that I wanna kinda touch on. Some of them, most of these come from the twenty-fourteen ordinance that was gonna be considered by the P and Z and city council, that was ultimately shot down. But some of these are considered an option, similar to fences in front yards, which allows carports where others are present. This would apply mainly to the old town site, like, like Jay mentioned, because we see a lot of fences in the old town, town site, we see a lot of carports in the old town site. It wouldn't really necessarily apply to newer subdivisions. And then the style, material, roof pitch, color, and design to be similar to the principal structure, as allowed by Texas HB twenty-four thirty-nine, there's a new senate bill that passed, that, or house bill that passed, that restricts you on, on, I guess, imposing certain conditions of building materials.
It's construction materials.
Construction materials, yeah, you can't really build it certain ways, you can't use certain materials, but the, the house bill allows them to do it their way. And us not being able to question how they build it, they still have to meet the building and fire codes, but we can't tell them what color to paint it, what materials to use. All that is at their discretion. The other one is to be constructed over an approved driveway surface, meaning that they can't build it over Caliche, it needs to be an all-weather surface, whether it be a blacktop or a concrete driveway, but it needs to be an all-weather surface. To ensure stability by anchoring to the foundation and comply with a hundred and thirty mile, mile per hour wind load rating. This is where the engineering seal comes into play. If we're, if we are to allow something in the future, that's one of the, of the recommendations that I would possibly be throwing out there, that it be signed and sealed by an engineer, that way it's done properly. The other one is construction materials to meet the city building and fire codes, kind of already mentioned on that, must comply with the side yard setbacks. So even back in twenty-fourteen, when they were considering allowing them to build up to the front property line, they talked about the side property setback still needs to be respected. And then they allowed more flexibility on the size, currently we only allow up to two hundred square feet. And the previous proposal allowed carports to be not greater than four hundred square feet. And then finally, Jay touched about allowing some administrative discretion to the planning director and/or city engineer on carports. And I'm, I'm gonna be taking all these ideas and maybe coming up with some proposals for you guys to consider. We'll be presenting some in the, in the upcoming meetings, they can be tweaked. But ultimately, it'll be up to the city council to, to change the codes going forward. Another thing that I didn't put on there was, sometimes, we've talked about maybe allowing the older subdivisions, maybe a subdivision has to be at least twenty years old for us to consider changing things and allowing for carports. But those are all some of the possible solutions that I came up with. Anything else?
Yeah, we haven't talked about it, but what I've seen a lot of is that these, some of these carports are actually back against the back rear structure. Is, are we taking any of that into consideration? Because, I mean, you know where I live, I'm surrounded by homes this, this way, and probably about three or four of those guys have already built overhangs, they come well past, as a matter of fact, they come into my yard. It comes into my yard, off the top of that, so they're built all the way to the back set, over the rear setback. And it's a, it's, one guy's got a boat under one of them, the other ones are, are patios and things that they built for parties and functions like that.
Sounds like an illegal accessory structure in the rear yard, sir.
Maybe we should take that up at the same time.
Sure.
Well, I mean, that, it sounds like it was done illegally, like Jay says, I mean, that wasn't something.
Accessory structures would be allowed in the rear yard, but they still have to respect setbacks, right? I mean, so, you know, again, weekend warriors or people that, it's behind the house, so we.
They don't see it.
Staff didn't see it, right? The neighbors see it, so I always tell people, best code enforcement officers we have are your neighbors. Because the first time you do something that you're not supposed to be, or they think, or you're making noise, they'll rat you out. And they're gonna call us, and then we're gonna go, and then here we go, right? So, but yeah, I, 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 I like, man, we, this has been a great dialogue, and a lot of information has been, has been passed along to us. And we will definitely discuss altogether a strategy moving forward, and then potentially proposing some changes to the city council for their decision, based off recommendations from these boards, because it's valuable feedback. We, this has been something that's been on our, our radar for a long, when I started here, I've been here almost fourteen years. About a year in, I remember Mr. Lopez presenting this, right, to the P and Z. And, you know, again, those conversations about, hey, if we do this, would the result end up in just eliminating the front setback altogether, right? And that is a concern, because aesthetically, I mean, you, you know, it changes the way a subdivision looks, right? And you come in with a brand-new subdivision, lots, seventy, eighty thousand, with a three or four hundred thousand dollar house on it, and, you know, are you really gonna wanna see carports in that particular neighborhood, who knows, right? That's for, that's for someone else to decide necessarily, but most of the time I haven't seen that very common, no matter how good the carport looks, right? That's what you have garages for, sir, you know, I mean, those are some of the, the discussions that we've had at this end, so, thank you. I don't know if there's anything else.
Um, we, we allow an additional thirty minutes for anything else that you guys wanted to discuss, but before we get into that, I wanted to hear from our council member, what do you think about carports in this?
Well, as a builder, I mean, we don't build, it's always that weekend warrior, I mean, we all have relatives that call us, hey, do you know somebody who can do this, you know somebody who can do that, so, we'd have to educate those people as well. But I do like the, I mean, it's kinda hard to make these people take down their, their existing carports. But I'm looking at the solutions, and there's quite a bit that we could fall back on and go forward with.
Sounds good.
I think there's some elements there, Councilman, that, that we as a staff, if the board's okay with this, and the council, obviously, where we could basically remove it from the realm of having to ask for an exception, right? And put it back on us and say, review it, take a look at it, if it meets all these criteria, X, Y, and Z, then permit it, right? Because it'd be okay, right? But if you're way in an extreme, if it's something where a carport is massive to put your twelve luxury cars up in the front, and they don't all fit, well, that's something we probably need to revisit and say, hey, hold on a second, put a pause on this thing, because it's just something that's not going to be appropriate for this particular subdivision or neighborhood. So I think building those parameters around that, and being responsible with it, and being consistent, right, on the application. Because I, I'll tell you, it does, I, I hear from builders in the building community, I was fortunate enough to be the planning director previously, and I was in charge of building and health and code at the time. Once somebody made a decision, or once we, I'll tell you what, I, I'll give an example. What was happening in those communities is they were asking for pre-pore surveys, right? Because we were getting a lot of encroachments on these irregular lots, we were getting a bunch of influx over regular lots, and it's hard for one of the inspectors to go out there to kinda see whether or not, you know? So I said, you know, we're gonna do pre-pore surveys, right? So I advised administration, we put it out, and put it out for months before we actually started hitting people with it. And at the beginning, I got a lot of pushback, like, what do you mean, and why do I have to do this? And I said, ultimately, it's to protect you, because the last thing you wanna do is do this wrong, and now you're constructing, and now we have to go to revariance in the future. So I'm doing it for your benefit, as well as our own, to protect our inspectors, and to ensure you're not doing something, tie yourself off to the wrong cord or whatever, the wrong pin. I've had that, right, where they tie themselves onto the wrong pin, and that throws everything off, right? And meanwhile, they're so far deep into it, they're like, how do I back up now, right? It's gonna cost me a lot of money to make these changes. So, but it took me some time, you're right, through education, through explanation, we took a little bit of heat at the beginning, but now that's become the standard and the norm that we do here in Edinburgh, right?
Jay, I think that one of the easiest things that we can do, because I know our board, we know that if there's an HOA, we wanna hear from the HOA. Because that development was designed to uphold some sort of architectural standards, and setbacks, and so on. So we wanna hear from them first, so if you guys put that as a criteria, I think that's gonna be a filter for a lot of the stuff that gets to us. And I think it's gonna be good, because in my opinion, you know, we, we put HOAs on all our subdivisions, and for a purpose, right? Not just to say we have an HOA, because we wanna keep an architectural style, certain, you know, keep the property values up. We want things to look nice.
A uniform look.
So we want everything to go through that HOA, if you're gonna build something, go through them first. And so I think for us, for myself and our board, we've always asked, is there an HOA? If there is, get the letter from them first.
I think that's an excellent move, ladies, I mean, gentlemen, I mean, it's just, that, I appreciate that, because it helps us. Just be, like, because I, I just, before one, right, so if you would approve a carport, because I've had this too, or HOAs, I'm like, this is against our guidelines, and you can't do this, and I'm like, we absolutely can, right? Because I'm, I'm issuing a permit, right, based on what the guidance the board has given. That if, in a private subdivision, if you were to allow, right, a carport, then the city could not, by house bill twenty-four thirty-nine, dictate to them what construction materials they could use. So although your HOA guidelines may say, if you do a carport, it's all gotta be tile, it's all gotta be all this kinda stuff, the city could not enforce that. And sometimes I do get some associations, or I get some, hey, well, this contradicts our regulations and requirements. I appreciate that, and you have avenues to enforce that, you're gonna have to utilize that, because we cannot, right? Once we issue the building permit, I'm not looking at aesthetics, per se, I'm looking at, does it meet the wind load requirements? Is it safe, is it anchored properly, is it gonna, that's what we're looking at, minimum building safety requirements, right? And once this board would have granted that, we issued a permit, now how they construct it, they construct it safely, and that's it. Anything the way it's supposed to look with this association would be up to the association to please, right? So, but thank you for those points, and I think that's a great idea, as a matter of fact, there was one that I had mentioned to you, hey, do we get a letter from the HOA? They're like, well, we're, they're getting it. I go, well, just be forewarned, if they're getting it, then probably the board may not hear it, or they may table it. And by the way, you really wanna, I mean, tabling is like. And by the way, you really wanna, I mean, tabling is like, that's the death knell to some of these items, because if you think about it, right, yes, y'all know, you're on the development, time is money. Every day that somebody doesn't build something is a loan, is interest, is, so, so when you table it, because they're not prepared, now we'll tell them everything, then that pushes it another month, because our meetings are only once a month, right?
And the, the other reason I bring it up is because I've been on the HOA of my community, and one person said, well, I've got an approval from the city of Edinburgh, and so that had an influence on the HOA committee, right? Because they don't, I mean, they're not on the ZBA, they don't understand that they have the power to say no.
Right.
So they see this city of Edinburgh permit allowing them a variance, and they're like, well, the HOA is like, well-
Oh, they'll use us against each other.
Yeah, exactly.
They do it to me all the time.
Well, they did, well, they approved it, so we have to approve it, right? So-
Yeah, I just, just know, I mean, and that's part of the education, even of the association, and by the way-
That's where the property manager should educate the board.
A volunteer is now, if you ever need any of our staff to go and present to your HOA about these things, please let us know, we're gonna be there, we're gonna, because it's part, it's your, it's an education process. A lot of people don't understand, they think that when we're giving them a permit, that we're giving them a permit to construct this god awful thing. That's not what we're looking at at all, we're looking at only the minimum building safety requirements according to our code, right? How you build it aesthetically, that's, that's something that's not within our realm to approve or deny, per se. And very specifically, the state has told us, that's not within your realm to approve or deny. So actually, once they, we approve a carport, they could build it out of sheet metal, it's a approved material, according to the building code, and we can't stop them, and we're not looking at that, we're just ensuring that it meets building code requirements. So yeah, sure, if you need us, any HOA, your neighborhood, let us know, I mean-
Jay, what's the permit process right now with the city of Edinburgh to build a carport? Let's say a homeowner comes, says, I wanna build a carport, what do you, what do you need?
So they would come in, apply, they can apply online, right?
Okay, but what do they need to provide to you?
They need to provide us the structural drawings, they need to show us what type, is it a prefabricated bill? I mean, well, here's building now.
Okay, so you all do require windstorm-
I could talk for them, I'm not going to, Edgar, go ahead.
On our end, we ask for the structural plans of how it's gonna be built, and the windstorm, if it exceeds two hundred square feet.
Okay.
And the placement and the site plan, that's the planning.
Okay, and, and do you all send, your, do you, do the homeowners have to actually call in for any kind of inspection through the process of that build?
They do the inspection of the footings and the, and the actual structure.
So that's already in place?
So essentially, if somebody wants to come in-
Really, it's just the ones that don't come in for the process, right?
Yeah, those are the ones you gotta worry about.
And are y'all, on all the ones that you know about that aren't coming in for permits, are you all going out and saying, okay, well, you need to provide me the windstorm, you need to provide me, and we need to come and inspect it? I mean, are y'all trying to get these-
On, on the code enforcement side-
On the code enforcement side up to-
What happens is, we'll issue a stopper quarter at whatever point, because, like, some of these, sometimes these things are already done. I mean, they're, they're completed, right? So the neighbor will say, hey, look, this guy all weekend was like hammering, we go out there, thing's almost nearly done. So we put a stopper quarter, and we say, come into the building department to cut, so they can explain to you what the requirements are, because we need it, right? In order for you to get your permit. Now, sometimes what happens is, because the carport itself is encroaching, we say, you know what, building's not gonna be able to approve it, even if you provide all this stuff, because it's encroaching into the front setback, so the only way for you to keep what you have done is to go through the exception process, right? And if they tell you no, sorry.
And if it's not encroaching, then y'all are, and they're, and, and y'all get everything in line, and they're, they're good to go?
Yeah, if they meet all the requirements of the code, trust me, I don't wanna be in their hair either.
Yeah.
It, it's just, get your permit, right? Because I need to make sure that it's anchored appropriately, and it's not flying into the neighbor's yard, destroying their million-dollar sports car, right? We can't have that either, right? Or caving in, when you're having a party, and you invited your family to come over, caving in on itself and hurting someone. So we need you to get a permit.
Yeah, and while we're doing a lot of cases where it's already built, we ask for an engineer to go out there and inspect.
Okay. At the, the expense of the homeowner, of course, I got you.
We had a case recently, I think it was at the last ZBA meeting, and where the applicant came in and applied for a building permit, and we told him how he needed to build it, so he obtained his building permit, but we learned later on that he had already done it, and it was done not meeting setbacks. So, he came in, and he says, well, we got a problem, we already built it, and we put him through the zoning board of adjustments, and what, what we discovered there was that it was, it was a subdivision that had like eighteen of them in there, half of them were done when they were outside in the city limits, after annexation, the other half were done, but most of them were without a building permit. So, I think the zoning board gave him the, the variance on that one, because it was an all-metal structure. We wanna make it safe also, I mean, part, part of the setbacks, or part of the reason why setbacks are in place is to prevent a fire, to make it safe, to prevent a fire from spreading from one structure to the other. So if they're made out of wood, well, that can spread, if it catches on fire, it can spread to the, to the next-door neighbor, so we want it made out of metal, preferably.
I think you guys support the note, because I know the hassle keeps coming up, that even if they, you see, improving the reality of the law, you have to go through a building requirement, includes fire as part of that, so it can just be made out of aluminium material.
Be dire to all people around them, so that's also part of the process right now.
Okay, guys, well, we got about twenty-two minutes before us, one o'clock, is there, I know when we set this meeting up, there was other issues that P and Z or, or ZBA wanted to discuss, we have a open table here, we can discuss anything.
I just wanna say it out loud, and also the other thing, Mr. Jaime, was the, just real, just because we have the P and Z here, and, you know, we have one of our council members, so the other thing that we've been seeing a lot of is people trying to build eightplexes and sevenplexes and by the university on these small fifty-by-whatever lots, and I just wanted to bring it up to you guys and just say it out loud, so it's just in people's minds. I think we should start allowing it, but more of a university home, where there's five rooms inside, and it's, there's shared bathrooms, et cetera, and maybe start opening up to that, because we are seeing more and more of these developers coming up to us, and we do have a Division One school, we are, and I think, like, when you go to Baton Rouge and all these other college stations, I, I like the way it looks when you see all these university homes that are rented to different students inside with the flags of the university, and I think there's a way we could accommodate these developers and not completely just brush them away and say, you can't do an apartment, because of course, the citizens around there, you, we wouldn't wanna see all these parking, you know, spaces there. So just wanted to bring it up to everyone here, because I know we are getting some of those applications coming through, and as a council, you know, I, I know we could maybe come up with a solution of, hey, you wanna build in a university area? We're allowing these kind of multiplexes, but it's a one-house that looks real beautiful with UTRGV flags, and then we kinda create that precedent, or we start setting some sort of tone for people to say, hey, we want your investment here, just do it the right way, since it's a university, let's not just do a bunch of apartments, but just wanted to bring that up, because I know we've been getting a lot of those in the ZBA meetings, or we've gotten like six or seven of those people that wanna do a hundred, so much for very little, but I think there's a solution, and in my opinion, I think the solution would be a university home. Just wanted to bring that up, guys.
No, I appreciate you letting us know that, yeah, density's always been an issue, right? People always want to maximize the total number of units they can put on a lot, I get it, higher return on investment, et cetera, and, you know, we are, you know, I wanna say about six, seven years ago, pretty longer, I reference this study all the time, because I, it shocked the heck out of me when I saw it, the university had done an analysis on how many dwelling units we were short here in this town, and it was over three thousand, right? So when you hear people saying, oh, nothing but apartments, it's because we actually need it here in this community, based on the fact that the university enrollment continues to grow. I think the challenge arises when you get, you get people wanting to maximize their property, and we get it, I, I, I'm all for that, too, but not at the behest of, of doing things that are going to make the city services suffer. For example, we're, we're having big-time issues with solid waste containers, having issues with parking, and if you don't provide enough parking on the lot, where are they gonna park? The street, right? And you've seen that congestion happen before, right? And the problems that arise with that, right? So I, 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 I'm all for, like I said, maximizing the utilization of the property, right? As, your realtors, and as property owners and everything else, you, you want that, and we want that too as a community, right? But we don't want to cause other problems because we're doing this. When I started here, lots were a hundred by a hundred, ten thousand square feet for a multifamily lot, right? But there was a huge push by the development communities, Jay, you're out of your mind, I can make it work in less than that, you're killing my return on my investment, if you can just trim it down to eighty-five feet, that would be fantastic on the lot footage, right? Like, okay, eighty-five feet, all right, okay, we'll make it work some more. Then we started getting, and I knew it was a slippery slope, I knew what was gonna happen, right? Now it's like seventy-five, right, that they're wanting, and they're asking for exceptions, right? Well, as you begin to shrink the lot, what happens, right? Now I need to figure out where to put my containers for trash. Now I'm having these joint containers between two lots that these people are dumping in, and these people are dumping in, and both people are complaining about. You asked about carports, and why we allow the encroachment, right? Well, some of it is because they're saying, Mr. Science, this carport looks terrible, I can cover four cars, but I can't cover the other two? Because I'm putting as many units as I can, which means I need to put parking not in the front, not in the back, why do I put it in the front? Because I used to put a drive in the back that people would use to, to come in as an access easement, it's not a street, to come in to park in the back, but there's canyons in the back, it looks like the Grand Canyon, because they don't fix them. Water has destroyed these things, because they built it not to city street standard, they built it like to a driveway standard, so the water just erodes that. So I can take you to apartments right now, in the back, that, there's pits in the back where these access drives are, so they push the parking in the front, they push the buildings back, right? You have the containers in the front, too, now, which is like, man, the trash is in the front? Well, they didn't put it in the back, and that's the reason why, right? So there's, there's a multitude of issues that arise from these things, right? Tom, do you wanna talk, or what am I taking your, your talk?
I'm gonna go along with yours, hold on. Also, I'm gonna put on my utilities hat, guys, we're also overlooked at that. The more development, the more multifamily is, I don't know if you've noticed, our trend is we're going to a master meter for the water, a master meter for a four-plex or three-plex. The reason is why is the more meters that we have counts as a connection. Once we hit a percentage of connections through our water, for our water, how we process water, that means we have to increase our water plant, we have to get a new water plant. So right now, a new water plant will roughly about sixty-five million dollars. So who would have to pay for that, means I have to increase our water rates, because that would be on to that, our current customers, which is our residents, that we'd have to raise that, because utility funds are by themselves, we don't interlook, we, whatever the utility department makes is what we do for operations. So that's why we're trying to cut down on some of those items and say, okay, if we do a master meter, you know, that owner has to be responsible for that water, so we limit the amount of, of connections, so we never hit that one. Same thing for the wastewater. Right now, we're expanding our wastewater-
How many meters does a multifamily lot have typically?
Five.
Irrigation, and each of the units have a meter. So every single lot that you see has five, right? And it's just a-
That's what I was thinking about, that university homes, because I, I looked at that, and I'm like, these university homes will more likely run off of one meter for these five bedrooms with the three bathrooms or whatever, and we're able to accommodate developers to still-
They're kinda renting a bedroom.
Pretty much.
Right, that's how legacy is over there, that department company.
Okay, because that's what, that's what developers come to us, like, it's because we wanna provide housing for students, and as a city, we're like, thank you, and then they're like, and then they're like, well, but it's because we wanna build an eightplex, and then we're like, okay, well, now you need eight parking lots, and then it's like, but how do we know you're only gonna have eight people and not these, every student, you know? At one point, when we're in university, you know, friends would come over and hang out, or, it's not gonna be just the one person parking there. And I was like, I was telling Mr. Jaime, there has to be a solution, I was like, maybe we just do these university homes, that way, these lots just don't go al olvido, and we're able to even work around our beautiful university area here, and we run off of one meter, it doesn't congest the infrastructure, most of these neighborhoods run, have an alleyway, so we're able to do dumpsters up in the alleyway, utilize all that front area as parking space for the five students, six, whatever it is, and I just think it's, it's, you know, it's an approach, at least, and we're finding a solution to not congest city utility and all that.
And, and I'm gonna say something real nasty right now, so, I'm hoping that, you know, someday, we do consider impact fees, because impact fees are actually for the development to say, hey, I'm gonna put in my part already, because now we're leaving it to our residents to pay for anything new coming in. So what would I use development, impact fees, water sewer, roadways, traffic, it's a huge thing right now is traffic, guys, and if we don't make any of the adjustments, and the rate that we're going, it's something very important that we have to look at, because I still have to, all I have for most of that is just what I make on a quarter of that property tax, because I still have to fund PD, fire department, those are crucial, those take up almost sixty percent of the budget, everything else goes to all the individual, and if we get lucky, some capital projects. So that's the kinda items that we're trying to think forward to help increase that, and I know as developers, it's very hard, because that's an additional cost to you, but that is the only way we're gonna get to catch up with the amount of growth that we have. Someone still has to pay, yeah.
The last time we did this, I, I've used this couple, this number a couple of times to put things in perspective, the last decennial that we did, the last census that we did, this town grew by twenty-eight thousand in population, right? So if you average that out, around eight people a day move to Edinburgh, new people that we didn't have before, right? Every day, if we continue the current growth trend, that's a lot of people, that's a lot of people. So I think some projections put us out that we should catch up, if not surpass McAllen, because of the land growth that we have, within the next twenty, thirty years, right? So if we're growing at this rate, and we're, I mean, we are the fastest-growing city in the valley, you could see that, those numbers realized pretty soon, right? Maybe even faster than that, because it's just the available land, it's just geography, right? We've got a lot of property to grow forward north, and, you know, we do get voluntary annexations of people that wanna be into the city, right? And obviously, that's taxing to our infrastructure, so, but thank you for all those points. We, we are, there is a trend statewide to kinda look at parking, but we know that if we don't look at parking here, where are people gonna park? They're gonna park in the roads, right? And that's just gonna cause a bit of congestion along the roadway.
And we're going through the growing pains, right now, with the university, all this growth, and-
It's closer.
The thing is, that a lot of these developers were trying to nestle in in these neighborhoods, and then the citizens that are, been there forever, we also have to take them into consideration, and it, yeah, it's-
It's tough for council on these zoning cases, I mean, I don't, you know, the decisions they have to make, too, when it comes to, should this property continue to be a single-family residential, or is the trend that we should make this multifamily, right, and open it up? And you're gonna get the people that have lived there for many, 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 many years, and say, you know what, no, we don't, we don't want multifamily, right, here, but, you know, as the university grows and housing is needed, right, you start seeing some developers doing some, some hybridization, right? I'm doing townhomes, right, which are smaller, but in essence, about the same density that multifamily would give you, right, as far as people, population-wise, but you get your own little lot that you own, right? So, yeah, we, we pride ourselves, I guess, in this town, we really haven't had that much of an issue with housing stock, right? People want to live close to where they work, and we have major employers, the university, county, school district, the city, right? So, yeah.
And I've been noticing that trend, I was telling Michael the other day, we had a conversation, I feel now we're going into that bigger city feel where folks wanna stay